Out of seven, and at this time shall we stand for imocation, pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for all that you do for us, dear lord, and thank you for watching over us, and just thank you for letting us be able to be the ones that can do the business for the county, and let us have the minds set for what is best to do for the county when we conduct that business. In Jesus' holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So we pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danny, you on land?
Yes, sir. Right there.
Thank you. First thing we need to approve our amendments for tonight. We got to vote by hand raised, right? Boy, we got to use a hand tonight.
I make a motion to be approved.
I'll say it. The motion is second that the amendments be approved. Any questions? All in favor? Danny?
Okay.
Seven yes. All right. The next is our claims. You got to copy your claims before you. What is your pledge? For the sheriff's department, yeah.
I make a motion with the added one for the sheriff's. I second it.
If the motion is second that the claims be approved with the added amendment, are there any questions? All in favor? Next, Danny?
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. Approved, yes.
All right, thank you. Next be announcements. Seven announcements. Here now, the first thing on being agenda is Dr. Keeler, superintendent of our school.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Evening.
Buckingham School Board is requesting approval of the year 2425 budget amendment. This amendment will update our state funding to the adopted budget released in June of 2024, as well as reflect the fall ADM 1725 that was reported to the state. And this was a loss, this represented a loss of 28 kids and a reduction of $168,207 in state funding. In addition, in federal funding, we are adjusting grants from projected totals to actual awards and carryover amounts. We are also adding grants that were awarded since the original adoption in the state and federal funds, since 2024. In our local non-recurring, we are requesting the reappropriation of state funds remaining at the end of the 2024 year that are to be used in 2025, including textbooks and state construction, which is being used to complete the CTE greenhouse renovation. In our local recurring, we are now requesting the $390,000 that the board of supervisors put in reserve for the school system until the state budget was approved. These funds will go towards the 3% raise that was given in July of 2024, as was presented during the budget process.
Any board member have a question for Dr. Keeler? Yeah, now what is the board's, what is the pledge of the board? Do you got a second?
I'll second.
The motion is second that we will fund this money. Are there any question on the motion? All in favor? Danny?
Yeah.
Seven yes. Thank you, Dr. Keeler.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. And I like to say before I sit down, it's been a pleasure to serve with you guys over the last three years or three and a half years. I got to do it yet, but I have really appreciate what you've done for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wallace?
Good evening. Hopefully, this is going to work. Hmm, but maybe not. Did I connect it correctly?
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and start talking. Hopefully, our slideshow will work, but if it does not work, that's okay. You'll just miss the really nice pictures. But I'm Ruth Wallace. I'm the 4H agent here in the county. I've come before you many times before. I'm also the unit coordinator here for our Buckingham County Office of Virginia Cooperative Extension. And my coworker, Jennifer Ligon, who is our Agriculture and Natural Resources agent, and I just want to give you our annual update about what we did in 2024. Now, this is a very quick, hopefully, it'll be fairly brief overview of what we do. If you ever want to know in detail what we do, I printed off our faculty reports that we just submitted last week. Mine is 45 pages, and Jennifer's is 43. So if you ever want to know what we really do, just ask, and we'll be glad to share a lot more detail than what we're going through tonight. The next slide I had just talked about our staffing in our office. Jennifer and I are the only agents in our office full-time. We also have an administrative and fiscal assistant who is paid completely by the state. We have two part-time people making up a larger part-time position for a 4H program assistant. We have been unsuccessful in filling that. We are going to re-advertise again in the summer with hopes of hiring somebody in the fall, part-time, 24 hours a week. Right now, we have two people filling in with emergency and sporadic positions. We also have an Extension Leadership Council. Danny Allen currently serves as our board representative to that Extension Leadership Council. We have a couple of members. Joyce Gooden and Sherrell Salisbury are members who are here with us today. I'm looking to see if we have any others. But it's about 10 people, 12 people on this group, and we do need a board representative. It's normally a three-year term, but the board of supervisors member only does a one-year term. And our next meeting is not this week, but next week on Thursday on the 20th. So if you want to be thinking about an appointment to that position. And Danny can serve again if he is interested and willing to do that. We'll just skip that page. Okay.
Okay. I'm going to update you on some of the agricultural natural resource programming that I've done. So over the course of my career, with the 1.3 million in grant funds that have come directly to Buckingham, that's generated over 12 million. I was able to close out the final grant that was open last year, which was a $400,000 grant between the Tobacco Commission and USDA to put the beef hub up at the barn facility. And so that finally is, has been finalized, and the beef hub is up and running. We were able to put eight cattle through there last year, or 10 cattle through there last year, and already have done eight so far this year. Some of the programs that we focus on, of course, are livestock programming, especially with youth. We did a practice show for youth in all of the livestock club meetings at the barn facility. We also did an agricultural career fair for high school students. We had 112 youth there at the barn facility for that. And of course, the cattle handling and other programming that I've done with women's programs and across the state. And then some updates on the Buckingham Cattlemen's Association programs that I am a consultant and advise for. There's around 300 members. 130 of those regularly attend the educational programming. We had 1,700 head of cattle that sold in 2024, around 3.9 million, and $500,000 of that was in premiums to how they actually sell those cattle through the tele auction. The production sale, we had the highest average across the state of 3546. And then there's some more information on the beef hub. We do have a new program, Field Filet, where we go through the whole process so that we can help more producers start finishing cattle in the area and taking advantage of these programs. That's about it.
So I think we covered that. In 4H, we've got a lot of, a lot of activity going on. That's the best way I can say it. We could not do everything that we do in 4H without volunteers. And this year, we had 66 enrolled volunteers. We had more volunteers that weren't officially enrolled that just kind of come and help at the beginning or the end of a program and so forth. But those volunteers contributed a really large number of volunteer hours. And we have a slide at the end that talks about how many hours our volunteers contributed through both 4H and Ag during the year. We had 20 enrolled teen volunteers. They help at camp. They help with after-school programs. They help in their club settings. They're in 4H and learning as they are helping younger youth and guiding younger youth as well. Last year, our unduplicated 4H enrollment in Buckingham was 1,384 young people across all of our different delivery modes, which include our clubs, our school enrichment, our after-school programs, day and residential camps, and our one-day workshops. I have a slide here that just talks a little bit about our camping numbers. Camping numbers across the board last summer were down from where they usually are. I told Jennifer I was a little embarrassed to put them on the slide because they were down, but it ebbs and flows. We just have some units like that. But we did involve a large number of campers in both residential settings, which are the first two, the junior camp and the cloverbud camp, and then also day camp settings, again with teens and adult volunteers to help mentor them and guide them and support them in the work that they do. I will also say as just an aside, 4H camp is the hardest thing I do. It is also the most rewarding thing I do, where I see the most impact and the most growth from the young people who participate in that program. Other things that we focus on in 4H is helping youth gain leadership skills, citizenship skills. We have a large environmental education program involving some overnight programs, some day programs, some after-school, and some in-school. So it kind of spans a whole bunch of delivery modes. I do offer school enrichment programs in conjunction with the school teachers, supporting their SOLs, and providing hands-on education to help the youth connect the book knowledge to the experiential knowledge. You can see the rest on the screen. There are a large foods and nutrition program, horse and livestock, STEM, and so forth. Most importantly, 4H is a positive youth development program. It's a place where our youth know that they belong, they're supported, they're cared for, they have a safe space where they can come, and they can explore their interests, explore their passions, things that they are really interested in. And it's okay to not know it all at first, and it's okay to grow in that knowledge and experience level as well. The last thing I want to leave you with, I told you I was going to put down the value of extension volunteer time from what our volunteers in both the 4H and the Ag realm give to the citizens of this county is, in my mind, pretty large. And then for every dollar that you invest in our extension program, you are currently in 2024 receiving a return on your investment of $2.19. So that is where I'd like to leave you tonight. Do you guys have any questions?
If not, we thank you. Young ladies so coming in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And remember, if you ever want to read our faculty reports, there's lots of information.
All right, thank you. Justin Young?
Hi, good evening. I'm not sure how long my voice is going to last. I'm Justine Young, CEO of Piedmont Senior Resources. I know we've got some new faces on the board, so some of you don't know me, but Buckingham has been a wonderful partner to PSR and greatly appreciated. And I hope that you're aware of the work that we do. I know Mr. Garrett has been attending our meetings and hopefully updating. I know he's been updating you guys some. But we have some really great information to share, and I'm going to turn it over to Becky in a couple of minutes, but there are a couple of things that I wanted to hit. In today's climate, one of the things I have been worried about actually for a while is sustainability of an agency such as ours that historically depended on federal and state money. And to that end, I've been working towards private grants, private sources of funding, ways that we could make money. So in November, we started a new business, signed a contract for a new business for the agency with Ground Game Health. This business will provide an income to PSR that we can then use to run programs that don't have any income and that are not truly covered by state or federal funding. So this business will allow us to provide health assessments for insurance companies across the United States. We started with, we were just doing local, and then we went statewide within a couple of weeks, and we are now doing national calls. So what this means is the insurance companies pay us to call and do the health assessments on their clients, and then link them to the services they need. If they're in our area, we provide those services many times, things such as the meals on wheels, or an aid in the home, or non-emergency medical transportation. But if it's out of state or out of our region, of course, we're connecting them to other organizations that do that work. I am hoping that this line of income will generate enough income to supplement our non-emergency medical transportation program. I know I've talked about that briefly here before, but that is a program we started out of need at meeting after meeting with community members and organizations. We were told there was not sufficient transportation to medical appointments. That's, of course, we serve seniors age 60 and over. That is particularly relevant with this age group because often they are not able to drive. Maybe the vision isn't good enough. Maybe they're not physically able to drive. They might be wheelchair-bound. And so it took me a while, but we finally got that program up and running, I think about four years ago. That program has been growing so rapidly, it is almost impossible for us to keep up with the growth. Because of the growth, we are constantly seeking new grants and funding to keep that program running. I think Becky's got all these figures, and I know she's going to talk to you about some of those, but you can, you'll see the huge increase in that program as well as many others. I did want to, I think Becky's giving you the annual report. Do you have that in front of you? Okay. If you flip to that annual report and go to page, I think page four, you can look at our total number of clients served in our seven-county region. It's 3,435 last year. In Buckingham, it was 503 citizens. Many of these citizens get multiple services. We may be giving them home-delivered meals. We may have an aide in the home. We might be providing non-emergency medical transportation, Medicare counseling, small home repairs. There's 26 programs, so I'm not going to kill you with all that, but you get the idea. So also, if you flip to, flip you over to page eight, we also received two national awards last year for work that we were doing. One was a doorbell program that one of our employees came up with, where we were able to put doorbells on homes that did not have one, where seniors could not hear someone knocking at the door, so they couldn't hear when the transportation was there to pick them up, or when the meals were being delivered, or even if the postmaster was at the door, or emergency services. So we actually won a national award, one of 36 given out by US Aging across the United States. That is the fourth year in a row, I believe, we have won a national award. So we were very excited about that. I'm also really proud of our farmer's market nutrition program. We had a huge increase in that this past year. We gave out $37,200 worth of coupons to purchase fresh produce from local farmers. I grew up on a farm. That's of particular interest to me, so we're helping our seniors. We're also helping our farmers. I hope to increase that. It increased by 24% last year. And you guys have that nice lovely farmer's market out here now in Dillon, I think it is. Yeah. So we're actually working on trying to connect with the people that run that to increase our product, production of fresh fruits and vegetables to seniors that we provide home-delivered meals to. I'd like to make some sort of connection where we could purchase some from them ourselves, and then distribute them throughout the county as we're delivering the home-delivered meals. If you look at page 10, you get a good idea of our revenue total and our total expenses and where our funding is coming from. I will tell you, when I first started with PSR, all of our funding came from the state and local government, and about $6,000 total from the seven counties. It is very much different today, and I hope that, as Becky, and you can see the contributions by county, but we are asking for a 700-some-dollar increase. That increase is actually based on your population growth of seniors. So we always base it on the population of seniors for every county, and that's why the request is different for every county. And Becky, I'm going to see if you'll come on up and talk about the scorecard. And we are so excited to have Mrs. Carter with us at PSR, and I know she's well-known to you guys. So, thank you.
Yes. I am Becky Carter, and I've been working with Piedmont Senior Resources a couple months. I'm supposed to be working 10 to 12 hours a week. I've been there since 8:30 this morning. If anybody knows me, that's the way I am. If it needs to be done, we're going to get it done. But I want to first draw your attention to what was just passed out to you. And based on what I've learned there, it has been astonishing of the programs there. We have done with grant money that was gotten through social services, over $10,000 in helping people keep their lights on, getting fuel oil. Like, in December, when we had those very cold, cold days, it was like almost 5:00 and get a call of someone that's got a half a gallon of fuel oil. And they've got to wait till payday. Well, you can't sit there and let people, and this, your business, Hehaver stepped up, and we got the fuel to them. But that's been a great program. And the reason I like for you, I've been there. I take those brochures, stuff them in the file, and that's it. But you have them at your hand now when you know people in your county that needs help. And believe me, we're finding that they do. And a lot of times, it's elderly people that are too proud to ask. But when the meals on wheels people go in, a lot of times, they can see what's needed. One of the programs will be the chore program. One of the meals and wheels drivers found that the lady's steps were not even safe enough for her to walk up to her porch to get in her home. She lived alone. When they got in there, they saw she had jugs of water. So they knew she did not have running water. So PSR, with their chore program, fixed her steps, rebuilt her steps, her porch, and actually took care of the plumbing. So these are programs that's not always, as she said, state and federal money. It's local money. It's grants. It's fundraising, a lot of fundraising. And even at Christmas time, it was delivered over 500 Christmas bags to people. And that had things in it like towels and washcloths and laundry detergent and little food and little gifts, something for everybody. This program has really amazed me. I am working as assistant finance manager, but I love the programs. But one thing I found up there, too, everyone works together. Everyone knows about these programs, and it's just a great team. But I will get to the numbers. We're talking about 700 and some dollars more that's being requested. Since last year, on your home-delivered meals, 1,945 additional meals have been delivered to Buckingham County in the last year with seven new clients. Your Congregate Meals, 250 more for Buckingham County, and with seven clients. Yeah. And in, and working with finance, I see where we pay for those, the food that comes in for those. And it's like $3 a person. But by the time you pay your dri, see, I just can't stop when I get into something. You can't, by the time you pay your drivers and your fuel. You can't, by the time you pay your drivers and your fuel, you're putting about $8 a meal. And so you're getting your money back, not only just that grant with electricity, but in your, your meals. But they have a care service program. This year, the 239 hours was put into that program, which was 41 more hours than last year. Your insurance counseling encounters, 38 this year, and that's four more. That program seems to be growing. The homemakers, and I hope you can read about that and learn about that, what a help this can be to people in their homes that can't get out and run their errands, that, that needs someone to come in for a few hours a day. It increased from 358 clients to four, from 12 clients to 13, but the hours increased from 358 to 1,426 in Buckingham County. That is a great program. The chores, which I talked a little bit about there, went from 60 clients to hours, I keep them hours to 109. Your legal aid did decrease a little bit, but that's probably a good thing. They do provide legal aid service to people. The on-ben-sen men cases, that did decrease by one. And to explain that, that is, PSR has someone that goes into your nursing homes. And to make sure people are being taken care of and not being mistreated. And that's a, that's a good program. She stays very busy with that. Okay. And then the non-emergency transportation, I believe Justine touched base on that. That's a great program. They're booked up to the end of February already, and.
We had 50 trips that we did last year, or 50 trips in 2023, and we did 63 last year. And we already have an increase for this year. Going upward with that. As people learn about it.
And, and, and I've given you all copies, I won't waste your time going down through everyone, but just some of the things you don't think about, the cool care. This is air-conditioned units that PSR provides to people. And they provided nine in '23 and 20 in '24.
Yeah, it, yeah, we went way up. You know, last summer was one of the hottest we've had in quite some time. And an air conditioner might seem a little, seem a little bit frivolous, but if you're 90 years old and you've got COPD, asthma, emphysema, whatever, you have trouble breathing. And when it's that hot and humid, you can't breathe. I'm a registered nurse, I spent years in the ICU. We had the same patients over and over and over. It's a revolving door in that kind of weather. When you put an AC unit in the house, you stop all that. So that saves your rescue squad from making those trips, your hospital from having to deal with it, and it keeps that client at home. And that's our goal, that's what PSR does. We try to keep people in the home and provide the services that make sure they can stay there safely.
They can care for themselves.
Yeah, and reduce that burden on social services, on the rescue squad, on the police department, all of those things.
So, so that's, I wanted to provide that. And again, stress to keep that information, because I know you all probably know people that can use the services. We really need people to know about this, because it's really sad when you do find somebody that needed it and they could have gotten help sooner. So we appreciate y'all's consideration. I think we have demonstrated our 700-some dollars more. Thank you.
Any questions?
Having any questions?
We get a call quite frequently from Northern Virginia, Mr. Miles reminds me of this. He's young.
Yep, yep, I imagine you do.
I miss him on the board, and I miss him as a friend.
Thank y'all ladies for coming.
Thank you very much, appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you. Now we come down to our public comments. How many got signed up yesterday?
We have two.
Two signed up. Okay, three minutes to speak in the public comments.
Our first is Maggie Snotty from District 5, and Douglas Oliver will be next.
My name's Maggie Snotty, I live at 194 Mountain View Road, and I am in the Glenmore District. Well, I'm back, and that can only mean one thing. I'm back here to talk trash with you guys yet again. I want to thank the board for your leadership and support that you have shown to the BATF. And some of you are members of the BATF, Cam Gillum and Harry Bryant. And I want to assure you how much your support means to the BATF. Last year, Cam Gillum recruited like 15 hunt clubs to participate in our spring road cleanup. And Cam and I are going to be meeting this week to strategize on our plan for this year. Thank you, Cam, very much. As the Chair of the BATF, I take my responsibility very seriously. I do not want to let down my team, and I don't want to let down the citizens of this county. The BATF, we are gearing up for our seventh road cleanup, and we are hoping this will be our best year ever. The cleanup will run from March 9th through March 31st. To date, we have collected over 1,500 bags of trash, six, over 600 people have participated, and that's about 80 teams, that's since 2021. And we have had, those teams are made up of individuals, church groups, hunt clubs, high school clubs, and various civic organizations. Just think of what that would mean for Buckingham County if those 1,500 bags of trash were still on the road. I would like to ask the board, as you're out and about in the county, talking with your constituents, just talk about the good work of the BATF. And if anybody's got any questions, send them to me. I gave Carl a sheet, a one-page sheet with some of the major things we're working on this year, and it's got my contact information, too. And I would ask each of you to let me know one road in your district that really needs cleaning, and the BATF will look very hard at trying to get that road cleaned this year. So in closing, I would just like to say, support the BATF, be a litter picker-upper, and that's a job anybody can do any day, just clean your own road. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, Doug Oliver, District 6, but I also own multiple parcels in District 1. I wish I was here for a different reason, but it's the same thing I came for in December. Mountain Pine 1, solar, not following the special conditions of the permit that you issued them. And I'm here for some other landowners who couldn't be here. On February 2nd at 9:02 in the morning, Mr. Warren Whitworth, which is an adjoining landowner, was eating breakfast with his family and see two people walking across his field. He goes down to confront them to see what they're doing. They're working for a company called Certs on behalf of Mountain Pine Solar Farm. I think Supervisor Davis was made aware of it. And we took your advice, Mr. Bryant, bug calling the sheriff's office and everything we said before at the last meeting. However, unless they're caught on the land, he came to swear a warrant on them, but there's nothing they could do. They got to be caught, so as soon as they're confronted, they leave. So today, I'm coming down, going down to check on things. I see a pole with a ribbon on it, off the property line, that's what they've been doing. I walk up, they own 647 acres. They step across the property line and cut one of my trees to use it as a property marker, and then they put it two foot off the line, for their benefit on me. Then, today at 4:45, on the same road we had talked about before, at the end of Burk Maaf Farm, at the end of Sleepy Hollow Road, which they were told they couldn't use, going on the Burk Maaf Farm, the guy we got that lives down there caught a semi truck with a lowboy trailer and some equipment on the back, sent that picture to Supervisor Davis. The company's called Terracotta. Somehow they got in with him seeing them, and they were leaving. Well, again, by the time I got in touch with the landowner, because Lynn was working on the farm and he got down there, they were leaving. So again, call the sheriff's office, nothing they can do because they're not on the land right then. So all I'm asking is, what kind of precedent are you setting? What are you telling the other solar that are following their special use permit? You don't have plausible deniability anymore. I came here in December and told you what was going on. At what point does your inaction create liability? All I'm asking is, make a move on this, just pull a permit. They haven't even started construction yet, and this is what we're dealing with on our end of the county, for multiple adjoining landowners. They have no consideration for what we're having to go through, and no consideration for the special use permit that you have issued. You really are sending a bad sign to these other solar farms that are following their special use permit. What are you going to do to them? This one's going on and on, and nothing's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That is all.
God Freddie.
Evening Chairman and Board, County Administrator. Thank you for having me tonight. It's getting to be that time of year again. The first thing I wanted to do is request that we do a work session for the spring, the six-year plan for our rustic program, where we could add roads that are gravel into the system. So if you guys don't mind, I was thinking maybe before our next meeting, if we could meet 30 minutes before the meeting to talk about what roads you guys might want to add.
Let's go with the board, meet them at 5:30 in March.
Be fine, yes, sir.
Alrighty, thank you, Board. So as far as some updates from last month, the tree at Chapel Road, Supervisor Davis, I think we took that down last Friday. We used a contractor. We, we looked at it at first, and we thought about just taking that side that was leaning towards the road, but we're worried if we did that, then the tree'd be compromised and maybe the house is within reach of the other side of it. So I think, to my understanding, the whole thing's down now. Alright, no problem. So we like to get them down one under control rather than out of control in emergency situations. Yes, sir. Thank you for letting us know about it. Then Supervisor Garrett, that speed zone that you requested me to look at on Route 649, last Friday, we were able to wrap up that work order that I put in for the traffic engineering to do a speed study on it, and they've opted just to leave it as it currently stands, not, not to lower the speed limit on Route 649. Then the other thing that had come up in the past, we had done some brush work, and we left some debris on the side of the road on Oak Hill, and we've gone through there and ground up all that brush near the, there's a section with a lot of mailboxes. I've been told that's all been taken care of.
Alright, thank you, sir.
No problem. Then I guess as far as the impending weather for tomorrow, we, we brined our roads today. We got crews reporting in at 5:00 AM, and they're going to be going 24/7 until the event is over with. I talked to Supervisor Allen earlier today, he told me, he called me and told me that he couldn't make it to the meeting tonight, but he did ask me about the guardrail that I updated on last month. And we're going to leave the guardrail in place, and traffic engineering's going to adjust the stop bar there at Thomas Road and Route 15 to make it where you stop at the stop bar, you should be where you can see down the road to pull out clearly. As it currently stands, if you stop at the stop bar, you have to creep up forward to be able to see, and then when it's clear, you can pull out. Then, and the other thing we talked about is a cross from Thomas Road at Rocky Mountain Church Road, I guess the railroad materials are still there, and they haven't done the crossing yet, but once they install that crossing, we're going to do some paving work and tie into it. Then as far as just our regular maintenance, we've been cutting a lot of brush this time of year, and then with it being a little warmer in the last few weeks, our gravel roads have gotten kind of soft, so we've been adding stone and machining our gravel roads, fixing potholes, that's very typical work this time of year, we've been doing a lot of that. And that's, I think that's everything I came prepared to update on tonight. I'm hoping next month to be able to let you know when the exact time, when we can maybe do the patching work on 602. But so far, we don't have that scheduled, but we do have it planned, I'll say. But other than that, that's all I came ready to update on, does the board have anything for me? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Two is good.
Thank you.
I had a couple issues. I spoke to Mr. Stone, and he's taking care of one of them, and I'm sure he's, I haven't had a chance to go back and check, but I'm sure he's probably taking care of the second one, so.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I don't have anything else new, other than a couple of things I mentioned to you earlier on about procedures, rather than stuff that needed to be done.
Yes, sir.
Clearing up a procedure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Five.
Yeah, San Angeles Road, about a mile from 602, the road is really coming apart right in the middle right there. And I'm sure you had a lot of them, but.
Yes, sir, that's a surface treated road. I think our permit specialist, Mr. Edwards, was out there this morning. He noticed that same thing you just brought up, and we're going to have to do some work there to address that.
Oh, I am. District 6 there on the Payne Pond Road we talked about last week, or last month, I see somebody put a few gravel under, carry, I tell you.
I forgot to update on that, but is that what you were looking for us to do there?
Well, I guess put with a wheelbarrow load there, you know.
Needs a little more, you think? Okay, well, we'll, we'll follow back up on that. At least we were in the right spot.
Yes, sir, you were in the right spot. I remember y'all did it, land on them, had to done, somebody to, you know, put something right there.
Okay, I think it was us, but I'll follow back up on it to be sure.
Thank you. District 7, Danny? I think you already took care of Danny, right?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, hold on.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The first item for business in the zoning department is the public hearing this evening for a zoning map amendment from NC1 to VC1 in the industrial park. Once again, a proposal for the zoning map amendment. This is in tax map parcel, tax map 138, parcel 15, Lot C. It is just over 125 acres. The public hearing this evening is held for consideration of a zoning map amendment for portions of the industrial park to include the 7.413 proposed site for consideration of sale to the Central Virginia Christian School, which would allow them by right the construction and operation of a private school, and then the northern two-thirds portion of the industrial park from NC1 to Village Center 1 as well.
Mr. James, can I? Well, do you have a bottom speaking in public here?
No one signed up.
That's fine, okay, Mr. Gillum.
So I have a lot to talk about on this subject, if, if the board give me a few minutes.
Go ahead.
First of all, at the last board meeting, we talked about rezoning and pretty much talked positive about the Christian school buying the land, and positive about rezoning the Christian school. At the time at our last board meeting, we did not have enough board support to talk about the final two-thirds of the land. So tonight, when I see the motion combined to talk about these two things, first of all, I'd like to make a motion or talk or bring before the board, and then I still have something to talk about after we go through step two, step one, is I'd like to see a motions made tonight, and I'd like to make the motion that we split the two categories of the Christian school and the two-thirds of the property into two separate motions. So I'd like to motion, make the motion that we set those two subjects separate from each other, and make a motion on the Christian school separate from the two-thirds of the final parcel. And I'd like to make a motion of that, first of all.
Got a second on that?
I'm making a second if you let me do it.
What did he say?
He's second.
Oh, thank you, yes, sir. We had a motion and a second, and then discussion on the motion? He ain't an all-in-favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Oh, we got six to one. Alright?
Alright. Along with that proposal, we sent us to the planning commission, which we, each supervisor has a constituent from the planning commission. When we sent us to the planning commission, When we sent us to the planning commission, the planning commission unanimously, seven to nothing, not six to one, not five to two, seven to nothing, wanted to approve the Christian school. So before we go into the second part of my statement, I'd like to make a motion that we rezone the Christian school in order to whatever they need to be their school. I'd like to make that motion.
Got a second? A motion and a second, and we're rezoning land for this Christian school.
For clarification before we vote, you're talking about only the seven point four one three acres?
That's correct. Just the part that the Christian school buying, only the part that the Christian school is buying. That's my motion.
Do we have any more discussion?
Who seconded that?
David, uh, Supervisor Davis seconded. He ain't no more discussion. All in favor? Raise your right hand.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Seven, yes.
Chairman, if I could speak one more last time. Along with that planning commission's meeting, they met, they discussed the final two-thirds of the property of the industrial park. Seven to nothing unanimously, the planning commission also recommended that we not change the rezoning of it, that we have the same committee that looked at it before, and we'll get to that in a few minutes. I understand through the administration that that committee is no longer in effect. But they recommended that we do not change the zoning of it, that we let a committee meet and let them decide in a year and come back to us. This is what the planning commission's unanimous decision came back as, seven to nothing, that we would come back and relook at it in a year after that committee met. Now, I understand through Mr. Carter that that committee no longer exists. And I'd like to give our Board of Supervisors a month. Both Board of Supervisors who are on that committee are no longer with us. Mr. Matthews, I'd like to see Mr. Palmer replaced with Mr. Matthews because that's the same district. Also, it happens to be in my district, which Mr. Miles was in. And I'll be happy to give it to myself or give it to a constituent of my district. But let's talk about giving it to forming a committee and letting each supervisor come back with some names where we can talk about in thirty days. But I'd like to make a motion that we don't do anything with changing the rezoning of it at this point and give our supervisors thirty days to come up with some names to form a committee to see what and if we could do with this land. And then at the time, if anything comes up prosperous that we could sell it, we could meet immediately within thirty days or even sooner with an emergency meeting for Mr. Carter to determine if we, what rezoning we need. But at this point, I see no point of putting the wagon before the tractor of doing any rezoning. And District Two is firm and one hundred percent firm that we do not want this rezoned at this point. So I'd like to stand with that motion.
Heard the motion, members of the Board, can we get a second?
I'll second it if Mr. Gilliam.
Will you say around it?
I will.
Now, which committee are we talking about? Is it the industrial development?
Economic development.
Yes. And basically, from what Mr. Carter told me, that committee no longer exists. So if the Board was okay with Mr. Palmer replacing Mr. Matthews and with Mr. Davis making a motion that I'm on there, I'd like each supervisor to come up with a couple of names and we meet back in thirty days and go over those names and reapprove them to have a committee. I guess if that's a motion, I need to make another motion, okay?
Did you second that, Davis? Did you second the motion?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Palmer, you willing to serve on the committee?
Yeah, I thought I was already on it. It didn't exist.
Didn't exist.
By the last meeting, the last meeting, we said everybody was on it as it was. And I thought I was already on the economic development committee.
I'm not though. As long as he's on there, I'm good. Okay?
February, didn't they adopt the same thing they did in January of twenty?
Okay.
For a board member.
I think this committee was dissolved, right?
Yeah. I don't think this committee was listed on there.
I don't think it's one was listed on there. I don't think. They had been resolved.
I'm just asking.
So you willing to serve, right? Okay. You heard the motion, you heard the second, and you heard the discussion. Are there any more discussion?
Now, when you talk about finding people to serve on a committee, you mean from our district or just anybody?
Well, it depends on, it doesn't have to be. But you come back as a supervisor and you pick whoever you like. And that gives every district opportunity to have somebody, but if you didn't have anybody in your district, that would be fine. If you want to give everybody District Two, Mr. Garrett, I'd be tickled with that.
Yeah. Just wanted to be clarified when you said pick.
What I was saying was give every supervisor a chance to pick whoever he wanted to, to be on that committee to do something.
Okay.
You heard the motion and the second and the discussion. All in favor? Raise your right hand. We got six, yes, yeah. Danny?
Yes.
Seven, yes, Jennifer. Alright. Got no more motions?
No, sir. I think I've made enough motions.
Alright Supervisor, let's move on. Okay. Evans?
The next item...
Doesn't he have to open and close?
I thought I closed it probably. I thought I closed it.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
The next item is a public hearing for case twenty-four S U P three fifty-one. This is, our applicant is Deborah Blake, fourteen sixty-seven Hundley Branch Road in Scottsville. Her property information is tax map twenty-five parcel eleven. It is just over sixty-eight acres. It is currently zoned A one. And her request before you as introduced last month is to construct and operate a private grass airstrip and hangar. Our applicant is with us this evening.
Will she come forward? If the Board had a question for her? You said she here?
She is, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Would you come to the podium, please? Thank you. Do any of the Board members have a question for Ms. Blake here?
I watched the planning commission discussion when you brought it before the planning commission.
Okay.
Alright, I just want to make sure I'm clear on, you said it was gonna be a Piper Cub that would be, it would be large enough for a Piper Cub to take off and land?
That's correct, a Piper Cub or smaller.
Just for clarification for the public, so how many feet of runway are you planning to? I've looked at it, but I just want, I want to share it with the public.
Sure. The recommended distance is about six hundred and seventy-two based on the size.
Take about a, less than a third of that to take off and land with a Piper Cub?
That's correct.
My dad used to have a plane. We used to fly all the time. And then I've been flying models for about thirty years. But now, I've been through there and looked at it. It's the old Duncan Farm? Is that where it's located on Hundley Branch?
I'm not sure. I'm not aware of it.
New house in the big field?
New house, big field.
That's it, yeah.
It used to be the old Duncan Farm and...
Right.
A lot of times, you know, when country people get to talking, you know, you go down and take a left at the big oak tree.
Where the barn used to be.
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right piece of property. It's not in my district, but I happened to travel through there and I was looking. And I thought that's where it was located.
Gotcha. And thank you for the history. Now I'll know.
But it's kind of, I mean, it's kind of secluded. It's really not close to anything else.
It isn't.
That's all I have. I just want to make sure that I was looking at the right piece and I wanted to confirm the length of the runway.
Do we have a sign up for speaking in public here? So we closed the public here. What is the pledge of the Board? I don't see no problem with supporting it.
I make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
The motion is seconding that we approve the special use permit. Danny, question on the motion? All in favor? Raise your right hand. We got six, yes. Danny?
Five, yes.
Seven, yes. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Alright, Mr. Evans, back to you.
Yes, sir. The next case will be a public hearing for twenty-four S U P three fifty-two. Our applicant is the Gooden Family Trust at seventeen seventy-nine Shelton Store Road in Buckingham. They have multiple tax parcels on which the request is being made for their S U P. The first one being tax map ninety-two parcel one, three hundred and nineteen point eighty-seven acres. Tax map ninety-two parcel twenty-six, just over thirty-five acres. Tax map ninety-two parcel thirty-one at six point four one. These are all currently zoned agricultural A one. This case was introduced last month in January of twenty twenty-five at your regular meeting. The request before you is that the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing and operating a country store, retail store for items including but not limited to general merchandise, EV stations, and an event center. Six events per year to include but not limited to glamping, try campsites, nature trails, micro events, community meetings, special programs, tours, et cetera, for up to two hundred and fifty attendees. That would be six events for that number of attendees. An unlimited number of events for attendees less than two hundred and fifty. I believe that Ms. C...
Be here. Ms. C, would you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
I know she'd be happy to answer any questions that she may have.
Do any of the Board members have any questions for Ms. C? For clarification, it's not Ms. C right here.
I was thinking the same thing, but I didn't want to say it.
This is not Ms. C.
Do any of the Board members have any questions for Ms. Gooden, Ms. Joyce Gooden? Here and answer what is, do anybody sign up speaking in public here? So what is the pledge of the Board?
I make a motion.
I second it.
Motion is seconding that we approve the special use permit. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Six, yes. Danny?
Yes, sir, yes.
Seven, yes. Seven, yes, Ms. Gooden.
May I speak?
Say what?
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Gooden Family Trust. And thank you, our family, for allowing us to continue our legacy on Shelton Store Road. Thank you very much.
Wish you good luck. You can be successful. I hope you'll be successful. Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir. The next item before you is actually a report back from the planning commission. Since April of twenty twenty-three, the planning commission, along with CRC, the Commonwealth Regional Council, has been diligently working on the comprehensive plan. And here we are nearly two years later. Last month, you received a rough draft. And this month, this is our finished draft. Mr. Davis has been working closely with the planning commission. And now Mr. Allen, he got to jump in this past month in January. We bring to you a complete draft by the planning commission. We do ask that you all review it, please. You know, we definitely want to work hand in hand with the Board of Supervisors. We would like to hold a joint public hearing, we being the planning commission with the Board of Supervisors. And there are a few options listed because obviously you have this. You may have changes, deletions, or additions to add to the comprehensive plan. So there are a few options. We, the planning commission wasn't sure if you'd rather have a joint public hearing at one of your meetings or at one of their regularly scheduled meetings. There's also an option, after you review this, we do have a work session next Tuesday, February eighteenth at six PM. We also will have one on the seventeenth of March to give you a little bit more time if you'd like to have a joint work session before we hold a public hearing jointly. I know that's a lot of information to throw before you. But the planning commission has finished their work at this point with the comprehensive plan and wanted to turn it over to you all.
We wait to get through budget time. We got a lot of stuff on our plate coming up.
It's up to you, but I mean, that comp plan is pretty big, so I would probably try to get some small bites of it in as you go along. You might need more than one work session to go through that.
We have multiple tentatively scheduled for all the months moving forward, so. We just wanted you to know that that rough draft from the planning commission and CRC is now before you.
That's the copy you gave us last month, right?
Last month was a rougher version.
That's a rough.
But we did not make any changes. It's more of a cleaned up version this month that's presented to you.
Is that the, that's what I'm asking, is that the?
Um...
Because it was some red.
Yes, you're going to...
It was some red, it was some red writing in the one that I had, not writing, but typing.
I think there was a, I've sent all of the information for our finished version. And I think it was just thought it was the same one. So we're gonna get that to you immediately this week if I have to drive it to you.
I've been looking through the other one, the rough draft. I guess it's the rough draft. But I didn't, I didn't think that was the original, I mean, the final one because...
There's a final one for you.
Some of it was written in red for whatever reason. I don't know, but...
That was a red line version from CRC in January. So the planning commission did not have any changes to that, which they confirmed at their January meeting. So CRC was able to completely revise that, clean up a final draft of the comprehensive plan. I can email that to whomever would choose that delivery or we can print that and bring it to you as well.
Take it either way.
What are you saying, Ms. Carter?
I was just saying that there's a lot of information in that document. So you may want to have multiple work sessions before you have your public hearing. That way you won't be under the gun to try to get it all done at a certain timeframe. I mean...
When are you planning to start working on the budget?
What did you suggest?
Yeah, yeah.
That's in March.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
What I had to do was maybe deal with the planning commission next, Monday next week and have any discussions or things that's not working out right to get all the things straight. And then next month, we have our meeting, we have a public hearing and have the planning commission go with us and we have a double planning commission. That's my thought.
I can't understand. Don't you think we need to work on a little bit before we work?
Yes, I think you're gonna need multiple work sessions for you.
I'm in agreement with what you're saying. There's a whole lot there. I've been looking through the rough draft and it's a lot of information.
It's a whole lot to absorb. It's like, you know.
You do, you all do have some very busy times ahead of you. Like I said, we have that work session February eighteenth and on March seventeenth. And I believe your budget workshops start on March nineteenth. Those are both work session dates for the planning commission. So we just wanted you to know that it's available. So if you have any questions for me or for the planning commission, we're happy to address them and work with you at your leisure, whatever works the best for work sessions and public hearing dates.
What did you suggest, what's Carter say?
So we, our normal board meeting is March tenth. And Mr. Frederick said he wanted to have a work session due for the B dot six year. Before that meeting, so that meeting's off. As Ms. Evans is saying, we do have a work session on March nineteenth for the budget. You could try to do it before then if you wanted to get one of those meetings in.
What did you suggest on March nineteenth?
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday. That's your work session. The planning commission has a work session on Monday, the seventeenth.
Okay, seventeenth. What did you plead to the Board on Monday, the seventeenth?
We also have one this upcoming Tuesday, February eighteenth.
My birthday, I can't make it. I do, I maybe end up divorced.
You don't want that?
We'll schedule for March then.
I'm just joking, but...
So March the what?
Seventeenth.
March the seventh, that's good with you?
Well, kinda.
That first meeting will be what? March the seventeenth?
March seventeenth would be the planning commission work session at six PM here.
And we have a work session on that Wednesday.
On the nineteenth.
That's gonna be your joint work session with the school board on the nineteenth.
At six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Five thirty.
But that's gonna be on March the tenth.
That's March the tenth, our regular board meeting.
What time is this work session gonna be? Six?
The school board one?
When we're gonna meet with the planning commission on the seventeenth?
Six.
Yeah, I'm just trying to put the time down.
So nothing on February eighteenth or no?
Thank you.
The planning commission will just hold a work session if necessary, but we...
That's still rabbit season, Ms. Evans. That's still rabbit season. February eighteenth is still rabbit season.
Well, February eighteenth is a horrible date for that, so we're horrible suggestion.
Okay. That's all you got, Ms. Evans? That's all?
I just have one more item this evening.
Two, right. Okay, two.
The next memo from the planning commission is a request for a resolution opposing House Bill twenty-one twenty-six and Senate Bill eleven ninety. The planning commission requests that the Board of Supervisors consider writing a resolution opposing SB eleven ninety and HB twenty-one twenty-six. These bills would allow the State Corporation Commission to override local comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances for siting of utility scale solar, wind, and battery storage facilities. The planning commission opposes any legislation that would take away land use decisions from the county. the county. Um, there are some more informational, um, items included in this memo, and the planning commission also forwarded an example of a resolution from Washington County here in Virginia.
What is the pledge of the board?
I make a motion to.
I'll second it.
Well, you wrote, Mr. Chairman, um, it was brought to my attention today that there's some other bills being floated around that do similar items, so you might want to say these two, uh, bills and others that are similar, because they're trying to sneak it through either way, so.
Right?
Change that motion?
Want to change it up?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that for that bill and other bills.
General.
Same words. I don't fuss them with us yahoos, and they just want to take it.
They do.
They do, uh-huh. You got a second?
I second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. There been motion and second, that we will support this, uh, then the question on the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. We got six here, Danny?
I can't hear the whole motion, what was the motion?
Will you state your motion again, Ms. Davis?
Yes, that we draft, uh, send a letter down to the state to. We oppose House Bill twenty-one. Try to remove the power from the counties to decide what goes in the comprehensive plans and so. Solar farms, Danny.
Or any other zoning issues, we, we still make the call.
Did you hear that?
All right, thank you.
What did you say?
I think I heard it all. Yes, sir, I go along with it.
Okay, seven, yes, all right, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Evanson?
No, sir, that's all I have for this evening.
Let's move on down to M. Appointments to commit to boards and agencies, no appointments, let's get L first. Uh, department, agency, reports, and items of consideration. General properties, consider proposed change order number six, gutter replacement at the courthouse. Carter, you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, that change order in front of you tonight is for the, part of the courthouse renovation project. When we first started that project, the gutters were not a part of the original project. Um, as you remember, back in the fall, and it's time we had some significant rains, once those rains hit, they were able to tell that some of the moisture that was coming through the building was coming from the gutter system. The, uh, downspouts were having water come over them, and then they were running against the wall, so that's how some of the moisture was getting inside the building and causing the mold issues. The, the existence, the existing downspouts are too detrimental, deteriorated to repair, and then, once again, if you use those old, uh, downspouts, nobody's going to warranty that work or give you any kind of guarantee on it, because they're existing, they're so old. We are hoping that they're going to use existing hangers that are in shape for the roof, so if not, as you seen this change order, if they have to go in and put in new hangers, they have to remove some of the slate shingles, and then we're going to get into a really costly item, so we don't, we're hoping and praying that's not going to be the case. Um, we're hoping that if that does happen, we will come back to you guys with a price for that, we wouldn't just approve this change order, but the change order you have for you tonight is just for changing the gut, existing gutter system so that it can help contribute to that moisture getting inside the building. It is one of those things, you're working on a renovated building, and at the time they did the evaluation, they didn't think the gutter system was a problem. Once they got into it, they found out the gutter system was a problem, so.
The gutter's metal or copper?
Copper.
We're going back with copper?
Yes, sir, going back with copper, and that's why another thing, we didn't want to try to repair one part and not look the same to the whole building, so it's for the whole system.
What is the pledge of the board?
I move that we approve it.
Get a second? The motion and second that we approve it, are there any discussion on the question, on the motion? All in favor? Hand raised? We got six here?
Yeah.
Seven, all right. Can attorney matters? Nothing? Can administrative report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there's an item for you about a, a firefly for an existing E, for an easement proposal. Um, I actually drew table that next to next month, because we're waiting for some more information from this person, and we did not get it today, so before I get you to the board, I'm going to get more information from him as well.
Other board matters?
I have something, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a member of the Dillon Fire Department came to me this past week and brought it to my concern. Doesn't have to be anything done tonight, but I'm asking the board if we could take a look at this, at the helicopter pad up at the rescue squad building in Dillon. Evidently, there's a water catch area, which is a lagoon, and from what I understand, there are trees coming up around the lagoon, uh, probably over a period of four or five years, that the, the fire department is concerned that those trees are going to conflict with the, uh, Pegasus Landing, and I'm asking the board, can we get Mr. Carter to look at it, maybe put it in bids or whatnot? I don't think this is anything that should come out of EMS's budget or whatnot, this is no more than routine maintenance, uh, but if we could take a look at that and maybe get some bids out, if these trees are coming out, I have not seen them, but I take a word of the fire department members, that this could pose a threat to Pegasus Landing, if we could, uh, look into that, I don't know if that needs to be made into a motion, but I, I, if, if we could do that, if the other board members would be satisfied, that's[1708.16]